All right, at 6:30 we'll start the meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'd like to welcome our visitors this evening. And we also want to welcome those that are watching us live. This is the first time we're doing our live streaming, so we're crossing our fingers and toes and hoping everything goes well. All right, agenda item number three, we need to approve the agenda with one correction to remove policy 709 from 5.4.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number four is public comments on the agenda items. Please come to the microphone and clearly state your first and last name so we can contact you if any further discussion is needed. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Please do not use individual names during comments. And just a reminder that this is a comment area, so there will be no conversation back and forth with the board members. All right, I think we'll move on. All right. Agenda item 5.1, Spanish club trip to Peru in 2027. Senior Dietz, and you've got some students this evening with you, so if you guys want to come to the microphone. So microphone is important because now people are online watching us, so that's how they hear us. Okay?
Okay. My name is Jessica Dietz, Senora Dietz, and I'm just planning my ninth trip out of the country. We've done Costa Rica, Peru, Ecuador, Panama, and we're going to do Peru again this next time because it's amazing and beautiful and a wonderful cultural experience. I brought a few students with me tonight to share two travels to Ecuador this last June, and then I've got one that's eager to go on the next, and I thought maybe they could tell you a little bit about their experience and why this is valuable.
Okay. And the microphone does move, so you can pull that closer to you if you need to.
I'm Sammy Hashi, and I think it's a really great experience. Like, it was so much fun, all the sightseeing and all the different places we get to go. Like, it's just a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it's something that you're never going to get to do again, even especially as like a class trip.
I'm Lucy, and same thing as Sam, Lucy Lohndowski, same thing as Sam. It's really eye-opening, and there's different cultural views. The food was really good, and it was really fun to be with the class, and it was like my favorite trip. It was awesome.
I'm Sarah Maroney. I first heard about this trip in probably seventh grade, and I was like, oh, I'm going to do that. I have always wanted to travel, and this seems like such an amazing opportunity, especially with Spanish class being my favorite class. I think it would be really, really cool to get to actually use some of the Spanish that I've been learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think we got the information on the trip.
Ms. Dietz, I just have one question.
Oh, sorry. He has a question.
You fundraise for...
Yep, we do, we do some fundraising. Actually, what I tend to do is reach out to local area businesses and organizations and ask for donations because we're pretty inundated with fundraising in our community. So asking for donations right to their educational experiences has been pretty effective in the past. Like, CLEF has donated to us and such. Any other questions?
How many students this year, Ms. Dietz?
Well, so, actually, zero have signed up yet. I'm trying to dot my Ts and cross my Is and get your approval first. We want to try to get three students enrolled by the end of September. That'll lock in the pricing, and then I'll start really pitching it out to students, and they have until November to get, lock in this pricing, and that gives them 18 months to fundraise and come up with the funds. The company that I work with does, can do it like a monthly bill, okay? So it can help families divide the cost over time because it's expensive. So trying to help kids and families make this doable, even though it seems out of reach.
How many did you have for the last trip? Maybe that helped.
We had 10 on the last one. I average between eight and 15 is pretty typical, and usually it's me and one other chaperone. I tend to just take a colleague, and that's sort of intentional so that the students are getting, they're not just gaining cultural and Spanish experiences, but also that independence, especially for 10th through 12th graders as they're getting ready to go off to college. There's a lot of moms and dads that need some space from their kids, and they need to learn what it's like to have them apart from them. So that's also one of the missions that I have with the trip, even though the parents beg to go. You know, this is a student trip, not a family trip. It's an educational experience.
Is there a certain amount of days here? Is it 10 days?
Um, it's a 10-day trip. Yep, and that includes, you know, usually the first and last day are basically travel. So you're getting eight days in-country. It's pretty fast-paced. Go, go, go. Experience, experience, experience.
And I know on your last trip, I asked this, so I have, I believe I know what you're going to say to me, but my whole thing is the safety of it.
Oh, yeah.
With the students, with the company that you use.
Yep, so traditionally, I've used EF Tours. I did that for my first seven tours, and I switched this last time to Explorica because they, they sold me, right? They, they sent me on a trip to Merida, they schmoozed me, they won me over, and I will say this last trip to Ecuador was probably the best customer satisfaction piece, and they award the same kind of safety. I mean, this is what they're in business to do. They want to keep us safe, so they vet all the hotels, they vet all the neighborhoods. I mean, you think about any big city, even going to Minneapolis, there are certain areas where you shouldn't go. It's not wise for you to do that, right? Same thing. We don't, we don't frequent neighborhoods that are unsafe, and they have people in-country that are trained that are watching these things constantly. So for example, if there was a crisis that happened in Peru close to 2027 when we're going to travel, they would, you know, send us somewhere else if it became unsafe for us to be there. So they're constantly watching that. That's their number one.
Thank you.
And that's why I work with a company, right? I could, I could do it a lot cheaper on my own, but I can't guarantee the safety like they can. So that's, that's where a lot of that cost, actually, I feel, is worth it.
Right? Yeah? Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, 5.2, our student representatives are not here this evening, so we are going to bypass them. 5.3, operating referendum election, November 24, 2025. Mr. Ollie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few updates this evening regarding the upcoming referendum. The first thing I would like to highlight for the community is that early voting started last Friday, Friday, September 19th. So if there are folks that are wanting to vote early, skip the lines on November 4th, they can do that a number of ways. There is a mail-in absentee ballot application on Ranger Nation Strong Foundation.org that they can access. They can walk into the courthouse at any time, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and they can vote right there at the courthouse, bring their ID in there, and they can take care of it that way. So just want people to understand that voting is open, and they can, they can vote now. If there are folks that are going to be absent and they need a ballot, they need to get that absentee ballot in sooner than later, and they are accepting those up until November 3rd. So if there are questions, comments, concerns, inquiries out in the community, we're welcoming phone calls. My number is 545-8817. You can email rick.Ollie@ci.k12.mn.us. And there's also a spot on Ranger Nation Strong Foundation.org where you can submit questions, and the community is using that quite frequently. We are getting more and more traffic with that, and we appreciate all of the CI community being engaged in this very critical decision that, that faces the school district here in the, in the near future. So, excuse me, Ranger Nation Strong Foundation.org is kind of your one-stop-shop for all information, but certainly we're welcoming calls and emails. The website addresses sustainability plans, the reduction proposal or approvals that the board made on August 25th are posted on there as well. So if the community is wondering about those specific items, it's all on there. We've also been doing a lot of messaging through the school district Facebook page, so if there are folks in the community on social media, also Instagram. The local newspaper, The Courier, has been publishing articles almost weekly regarding facts and different information. The Brainerd Daily Dispatch did an article on the referendum, and I'll mention that in a moment when I do my, my superintendent report to highlight a lot of the, the information as well. We have a CI podcast that's on Spotify, so if there's podcasters out there and they're in their cars or they're doing yard work and they want to just listen and learn more about CI and what's going on, I encourage folks to access the CI podcast. We have literature posted in all of our school offices, including the district office, so if there's community members in the building, they can stop in and get brochures and hard copies of, of the information as well. So we're doing our best to try to get the, the facts and the messaging out there and provide all the resources possible for the Crosby-Arington community so they can be engaged and informed when they, when they vote for the, for the referendum on November 4th or if they choose to vote early. Again, the November 4th referendum is a $1.5 million vote. It is about $1,512 per student, and it is a 10-year operating levy. We will be sending informational mailings home to all district residents as well very soon, so they'll be getting the mailboxes.
It was in my mailbox today.
It's there. Okay, so that's, that's good to know. Appreciate that information. We are also posting weekly videos, kind of Friday facts on several different topics surrounding the referendum, upcoming topics that will be sending out our bond versus levy explanation. That's a common question we're getting from the community, the difference between a bond and a levy. So we'll have an informational video dropping on that soon. We also dropped the Project Unite podcast. We have video coming out about passing and failing concepts that the school board has approved, as far, as well as the reductions that you approved in August. With that, are there questions, comments, or inquiries regarding the upcoming operating referendum?
Any questions or comments from anyone? All right. We'll move on then. Thank you. 5.4, policy review. Policy 806, crisis management policy. This is the first reading of an, of the revision. Are there any questions on that?
Sorry, this one was quite lengthy. The only question I had or just kind of note was, and I know it says, it's towards the end, let me find it exactly, but it just talks about if we would do, ever do an active shooter drill or whatever, that it says you have to give parents 24 hours notice. Like I said, I know it's not like a guarantee you would have to. I just would hope that we would give them much more than 24 hours, just because it can take a little bit, and everybody checks their email all the time, not everybody sees notes in bags. So I know that's just part of the language, probably from MSBA, but I just wanted to put my two cents in there, that that is not nearly enough time if we ever do something like that.
That's something you could change.
So, yeah, I don't know if it's something that we want to change.
What would you propose?
Uh, I don't know. I would say a week. Well, that's what I was looking at too, but I thought, well... And then, like I said, it doesn't say it's something you have to, to do, and I don't know if it would actually be even...
I think for legal purposes, that was to be a minimum of 24 hours, but I agree with you, more advanced notice is possible for...
Yeah, because you have to give them chances to opt out, too.
Sure.
So I think we can update that to, say, a week or seven days.
Do I need to find the specific spot, or do you know where it's at?
On page 806.
Okay.
11, section D, paragraph 1, third line.
Perfect. So, I mean, we can, we can change, we're not voting on it tonight, but we can change that language in there, and then that update can come to us for next month's board meeting, and then we can vote on that.
A change in the language?
A change in that language. If there's any more questions and stuff, we can always address that at the October work session to bring that forward because that is part of that also.
My recommendation would actually change the language to read seven calendar days.
Yeah, because it says, it goes, notice must be provided at least 24 hours. I mean, like, I would just say, provide it at least seven calendar days. I would just put it, yeah, so, whether it be a month, two weeks, it doesn't matter, but at minimum.
Good call.
And we can always just, we can put that in there, and then we can, any more things that come up, we can always discuss it at the work session in October. All right. Number six, approve the minutes from the August 25th, 2025 regular school board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number seven, informational items that are included in our packet. So I just kind of want you to know that we changed this starting this month because we rearranged how we did our committees. So each one of us are individually on a committee, so the discussion was, we will give a little synopsis of those other committees, which this is kind of new for all of us because we've never really done it. So we'll start with the 7.1 administrative reports, and we'll work on those first, and then we'll do the actual committee reports. So we'll start with 7.1 administrative reports. Are there any questions, comments? And then, Mr. Ollie, we'll get to your, because is this where you wanted to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, anything with the top four then? How's that sound?
I, I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to comment, everybody does it differently, and I just really like Mr. Barry Fisher's. His report, it just is very thorough and just, it gives more like examples and just concrete things that are happening and going on, and just like kind of what to look ahead towards, I guess, than simply just a letter stating the same thing month after month. So just want to give, I know, I believe, Mr. Dan Fisher's using the same format, so I appreciate that. Like I said, you don't, you don't know what you don't know, so.
Is that something that came with them?
I believe...
Or was that something that you brought forward, Mr. Ollie?
That would be the principle.
Yeah, I think, I've talked to Mr. Barry Fisher, he's, that's what he used, and he gave it to Dan and said, hey, this is what I use. So I really...
It looked amazing.
Yeah, I really like it.
Yeah. Because it kind of gave them a space to actually write stuff, and they didn't have to think of everything.
It's got prompts, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, nope, so just wanted to make a comment of that. Otherwise, I have no other...
Template.
Yeah, it was very good, so.
Questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question regarding the activities director, Dean of Students' Report. I noticed that there's considerable decreases in many of the fall sports. Did he give any indicators of what he suspects that might be a result of?
I have not heard any. I haven't had any feedback on that, but have you heard anything, Mr. Ollie?
I have not. I did notice that as well, so I can find out more facts and specifics on that and put it out in my board notes.
Yeah, just something that we want to track. I mean, we're looking at a, a decrease in football, junior high school football, tennis, an increase in volleyball, thank goodness. Junior high volleyball was a decrease, and overall, a decrease for 2025, so.
So my assumption, just is, just based on, I mean, because I see all the, the youth sports and then this, is we did have a really active senior class that graduated, and our freshman class that came in or sophomore, I mean, like, some of those classes are not as active in our sports. They're active, active in other extracurriculars, some are and some aren't. And so that's where we had, that's where I believe some of the decrease, especially like with football. There was probably, when I looked at the roster from last year to this year, there was probably five kids that went out last year, then decided not to go out this year, and some of them just transferred, different schools, moved. And then, like I said, I know tennis, some had graduated. So, and then volleyball is just the class, the class sizes, participation. So, but we have excellent numbers at the junior, or the JV, no, sorry, fifth and sixth, third and fourth grade level, so there's more coming.
I was just going to say.
So.
Yeah, so like the junior high volleyball, this year's ninth grade volleyball team is like 18 girls, so that's a, there's more girls in ninth grade than there are in all of the...
Seventh and eighth, yeah.
So, yeah, that was a big class, so.
All right, we'll find that out, and Mr. Ollie will get that to us.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to 7.1E Superintendent.
Just start out this evening with a couple acknowledgements, student leadership and involvement. Thank you to Mr. Holmes and Ms. Katzenmacher, weren't able to be here, but they've been very active behind the scenes. They were guests. If you haven't listened to the CI podcast, they did a real nice job of being on that and putting up with my questioning, and I appreciate their involvement with that. So listen, if you have not done that, they're doing a lot of things to promote the school and, and support what's going on here. Ms. Lee and the, the students also participated in an interview with the Brainerd Dispatch regarding their upcoming referendum as well. If you haven't read that story, it's, it's out there, it's published. They represented the school really, really well, and I'm very proud of them. It's good to see kids here tonight talking, and the board likes to hear from, from students, so this is real nice to have students and staff in, in the, in the room talking with the board, and so, very good. Just a quick update on some community outreach and engagement activities. Crosby City Council, Emily City Council, Arlington City Council, I've had the opportunity to speak with, with them and go through information regarding the upcoming referendum. We've met with the Hallet trustees about scholarships and, and next steps with that. I've had the opportunity to meet with the hospital leadership as well, and we're planning on opportunity for I get to speak with the hospital board and just introduce myself in, in the near future. Had the opportunity to attend CLEF, which we'll hear about in a moment, I'm sure, and that was a very active and productive meeting as well. We are hosting the Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours, October 21st. We are starting that at 5 o'clock, and that will be in the Ranger maid area, and Ms. Ottersted's students are providing all the appetizers, and they're going to cater that in, and hoping to get a lot of community and business members in that day to do a Q and A, to see the facility, to hopefully have some students there to talk with. Hopefully, it'll be a real fun event, so if you're around and available on the 21st, invite you in to be a part of that. And just want to thank Ms. Ottersted and her students for getting that ready for us. Upcoming stuff, we got the Bay Lake Mission and Deerwood meetings that I'll be attending here in the near future, and then the Hartwood Board has asked me to attend one of their upcoming board meetings on, I believe, the 13th as well, to visit with residents and get information out about the upcoming referendum there, too, so. Mr. Tolleson, we put, at our last meeting, we were asked to put together a document that outlines specific underfunded or unfunded mandates by the federal government or the state government. A lot of our messaging on Ranger Nation Strong Foundation.org talks about the reason we have a financial crisis right now in the Crosby-Arington schools is due to the lack of funding of the mandates that have been put on the schools. So it is prudent for us to be specific and clear with the public about what those mandates really are and what financial impact it's having. And you can see on, on your list in front of you, not only what those categories are, but there's a dollar amount tied to tho, tied to those. So just, just looking at the special education underfunding alone, you see the number, $1.2 million. That's for the Crosby-Arington School District that we spent that was not funded, but we had to provide those services. $1.2 million in special education reimbursement. So as you're having conversations and there's questions coming, and hopefully that can help you and serve as a guide for you, it's also on our website, and it's, it's for the public to, to view as well. And again, we're just trying to be transparent and clear about why you are asking for a $1.5 million a year referendum. That document right there shows you what's been underfunded and unfunded, and that's not fair to our students.
Something you're going to share on the Ranger Nation page?
Yeah.
Where do you plan to put it?
Yep, this will be on Ranger Nation Strong Foundation.org. I will be doing a Friday FAQ video going through that as well. We have this printed off, obviously. We can post that in the district office and get it on our Facebook page, too. It is good information for the public to have. And thank you to Mr. Tolleson for doing the work on that and really putting together accurate, transparent information for our public. The public wants transparency. That's transparent, and that is why you're asking for a referendum on November 4th.
I think this is excellent, so thank you, Bill, especially.
And then the last item, I had the opportunity last Monday to attend the Community Education Advisory Council Strategic Planning Session. There was a nice cross-section of community members that attended that. It was about four hours, and we were led through strategic planning process by the Executive Director of the Minnesota Community Education Association. Real, real well done, identified some near-term priorities, as well as some long-range goals. I met with Ms. Getz, and we've been talking about how we're going to get those priorities communicated and then create actionable steps moving forward to reboot, refocus, and to get our community ed program continuing to move in the next direction for the, for the future. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes with that right now, and we'll look forward to probably in the November business meeting, having a presentation or a report from Ms. Getz and some members of that council, so the board can hear a little bit about what work's being done and what specific actionable steps we're, we're trying to take here to move forward. So there's a lot of, lot of ideas. Anytime you do a four-hour strategic planning session, you're brainstorming and talking about a lot of things. You some leave almost more overwhelmed with the work ahead of us, but it's also good to get that out there so we can, we talk about those things and create those actionable steps moving forward. So I was very proud of the work that the community and, and they did, and it was really good to sit in on, and I learned a lot, so appreciate that opportunity.
Mr. Ollie, did we, I, I know we had a speaker come to that, correct? Somebody came and presented at that from the state?
The, the executive director.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't pay for that person to come, correct?
We did.
We did? Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we did pay. I don't know the cost.
Okay.
It was $500, yep.
Okay.
And that was under the community ed service fund.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. The last item that I don't have on my sheet, and it, it's for the board to discuss, our October 6th work session that you all received, an updated invitation for, the, the agenda's quite small, and there's not a lot that appears to be on that. I'm, we have it scheduled, we can meet. You do probably have at least three meetings in November with the work sessions, the canvassing of the election results, the superintendent evaluation transition, as well as your business meeting. So you could, you could possibly bypass your October 6th work session and maybe just do one meeting in October and then do your three meetings in November, just for discussion. You don't have to, but I thought I'd throw that out there for the board to discuss.
Okay, so I just look at it as, it, it's okay, but if we're meeting, the canvassing is going to be at, what, 8:30 in the morning?
Correct.
So then if we do an 8:30 in the morning, then we have to come back at 5 o'clock at night. Is it, just throwing...
That's in November you're talking about.
Yeah, November. I'm just throwing this out there. If we do a No, an October work session in November, we could do the canvassing and then not do a work session.
Is there a reason that we're meeting the 6th and not the 13th?
It is Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day, and we aren't able to meet.
I will not be able to make the 6th.
National holidays.
I have a council meeting that night again, so.
And I'm flying...
Won't be able to make it.
Back into town. I'm on the October 6th.
Okay.
I am available at 6:00, it doesn't matter to me.
So my other thing is, is if we have more dialogue regarding the seven, policy 709, I guess that was, that would be the other thing that would be part of our work session.
709 or 806? The transportation one or the...
709.
The transportation?
No.
No, yeah. No, sorry.
Eight oh six.
Eight oh six.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that we're. Yeah.
I'm looking at the one I crossed off.
No, that's okay.
Sorry, yeah, eight oh six.
I could be here later on the sixth. I mean, it'd probably be closer to seven thirty.
I think we're done by then.
That's I figured.
Yeah, because we start at five.
So, or if we did it right away, I, I'd just have to leave at probably about five forty-five, so.
I guess the, you know, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm good with it. I was just looking at different options with November.
So, the, in November, we're canvassing the tenth in the morning, and then we have a work session that night?
Yeah, I don't know everyone's schedules, so the other option would be if we're canvassing at eight thirty, we can go right into our work session after that also. But again, I don't know people's schedules.
I'm gonna have trouble being there at all, so.
Okay, so the, the tenth.
The tenth.
You're talking about.
In the morning, yeah.
The tenth.
For the canvassing. So, I won't be able to stretch it any farther into the morning, but I can come back in the evening.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, okay.
What do you expect, Mr. Ollie, canvassing less than an hour?
It takes about five minutes.
It'll, it'll be.
I figured.
Short and sweet. These are the election results, yeah.
But yeah, you could close that and then go into your work, I mean, depending on.
Depending on the amount of people, yeah.
I was just thinking for, for Ms. Hotla that we should probably only need her for five to ten minutes, so.
That I can do.
Yeah, it's pretty quick. It's, it's fast.
Do you, I guess, do you have a, a run, I mean, like rundown of the rough or could you email us the agenda for the work session on October sixth and then make a decision then?
I can do that.
Would that be okay?
You, you would have a policy, potentially eight oh six, maybe a buildings and grounds update, but we'll probably kick that in the November after the WOKE is completed and we'll have, or even December.
Okay.
On that, so we probably wouldn't have much there. There won't be much with finance. So, just, I'm just looking at this, it's pretty thin to meet.
Or could, the other option is before the meeting, when's our regular meeting, the twentieth? November of October?
No, it's the.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, okay. I'm saying you could, we could meet half hour, forty-five minutes earlier to that to do a work session, or is that not?
You can do that.
If there's something, I mean, if you wanted to discuss and then get a building and grounds update and then have a regular board meeting, that could be an option too.
Yeah.
I could do that.
Okay.
I could do six o'clock.
So, the October twenty seventh would be a better option to do work session.
And then the board meeting?
And the board meeting than a November work session. Is that how?
Then the October work session.
Right, so then we would just meet the next week then, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. And then I would just, I guess, assess and see what's on the tenth.
Okay, okay.
I wouldn't make a decision about the tenth until, because you just never know what's gonna come from the work session. But if October's looking late, just push that to an hour before or a half hour, I don't know.
Okay.
Before the regular board meeting.
So, do you recommend that we send out an email about that to make sure everyone can check their schedules and make sure that works?
I think so far everyone here, but yeah.
Yeah, I think we should send, send it out to Barb and make sure that it works for her and then.
But that's the consensus.
Yeah, okay.
Plan to move forward with it.
Let's, uh, send out an invite with maybe a note on it that says that or an email ahead of time and then the invite, however you think it won't get missed.
Which date?
The twenty seventh. So, whatever you think, we need a half hour, forty-five minutes, an hour?
Sounds good. Get that out, you bet.
Anything else with superintendent? No, okay. We'll move on to the committee report, seven point two. So, I don't, this is all kinda new, so I don't know if we wanna go in order or what we wanna do. So, I'll just start and talk about staff development. I know you guys get those in your packet, but I just kinda wanted to run down a couple things. One of the big talking points was the staff will be working on the process of how they do their PLCs. I know there, it was kinda new this year for them, new admin, new ideas. So, they'll be working on that to see how they can make that work effectively for them in their areas. They, it appears they all have open minds and stuff and are willing to learn new things, so. Um, let's see. So, the staff development committee is looking forward to getting feedback from the new staff, doing the mentoring program. They didn't wanna send that out until they had their feet wet and they got to have a feel of how they're doing in their new roles. So, we're hoping that we'll get that in October, a feedback on that. Working on getting the curriculum cycle and the conference cycles on track for staff. So, it's, um, just to kinda give you guys background on that, they have a set, like who gets new curriculum each year. And then they have, so that people don't miss out on certain conferences or have a chance to go to conferences. They, we have it set so that certain groups have priority, quote unquote. Um, and we're trying to tweak that so that everybody gets on the same page and nobody is gonna miss out. And I think it's a great thing, honestly. Um, and then we're working on the paraprofessional training manual, which I believe was finally found. And, um, we're gonna look into that and a possible mentoring program for them, because at this point, we don't have that. And I, I agree with the group that they.
Important.
They need it. So, that is my speech on that one. So, Beth, if you wanna go next with, uh, CLEF?
Yes, I, uh, this was my second CLEF board meeting that I had a chance to attend. And it, let me just say, it is absolutely delightful to be part of an organization where we are literally handing money to people to, you know, bolster the education of our students. It is just life-giving. So, um, they start every meeting with their, this quote by Albert Einstein, "Students are not containers you have to fill, but torches you have to light up." And I think that really echoes what we're doing here just overall. We were able to give out eight grants to various programs, teachers, projects, and then a ninth that are, we are waiting for just a, a final bit of budgeting information on before we approve that. I don't have a total on it, but the smallest we said yes to was five hundred and nineteen dollars, and the largest we said yes to was thirty-four hundred dollars. And National Honor Society is on that list, uh, skills programming with basketballs for sports materials is on that list, just a huge Friday book purchases. It's exciting and it was lovely to be a part of it. The other news of interest from CLEF is that our President, Clark Marshall, is stepping down for health reasons and his position is being taken over for the time being by Mike Domon. So, we will be in good hands and have been in very good hands with Mr. Marshall for quite some time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I think you kinda gave us an update on the community ed advisory council, Mr.
And that's Barb anyways.
Yeah, it's Barb, but I knew she was gonna be gone, so unless there was more.
Barb did attend.
Yeah, she did attend.
She may have a report at the next, next meeting, so.
Yep, okay. Um, Infinity, I think.
So, that is mine, but I do not, I mean, I was just newly assigned. I don't know when they meet.
Um, it's usually January and June, so.
Well, then I have not attended.
Correct, yeah. So, I didn't think you'd have anything.
This is my report.
And then Kuna Rec, Mark?
Uh, so the only thing, I got the report on the Kuna Country State Recreation Advisory Council. We had a meeting a couple, let me see, back in August. And the big thing we're working with right now is we're, um, there's a, a group of, um, ATV groups that want to, um, put a trail around, basically around the state rec area. And so, some of us, um, I did not make it, um, I wasn't available that night, went out and actually rode, um, in a van or a bus together on kind of the trail of where they wanna take it. It's a, it's a pretty good amount of, of distance. A lot of it is on like the side of the county roads and stuff like that, so. That's probably the biggest thing we're, we're, uh, we're dealing with right now. So, other than obviously, there's a bunch of, um, if you've been out in a rec area, especially at the, um, trailhead, there's a, a big project going on out there right now. They're widening the road. So, there can be some places where people can pull off and get their permits and stuff like that instead of, um, having just that. I don't know if you've been out there, they just used to have a yellow cement tube that you put your, put your paper in and then somebody would send you the permit. It's gonna be more high-tech than that, so. It's something that should've been done a long time ago, so, um, I was glad to see that the state finally got around to, uh, you know, getting it up the, up the par of where other state rec areas are, so that's all I got to report.
And then the Paul Bunyan Joint Powers, Tommy, I think they only meet once a year and, yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, no meeting so far, so nothing to read.
I think it's November. I don't know, I got the invite.
You sent it.
I sent it to you.
Yeah.
I don't remember when it was.
Okay, so we're somehow gonna have to reach out to them to have them change.
I, I replied and said that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm not sure if they did that or not.
Okay, perfect. All right. Seven point three enrollment report, Mr. Tolleson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the enrollment report is included in your packet. I would like to take a moment to just, as a reminder, because it's been three months since we've seen the enrollment report walk through this structure. Grade levels are listed in the first column. Uh, the second column are the twenty-four, twenty-five, that's average daily membership, that we're presently reporting to MDE that will be wrapped up by December. Those are the current numbers, uh, that are in the twenty-four, twenty-five column. The, the second column of numbers are what the preliminary budget was based on. And then on the, closer toward the bottom, they, that count is converted to pupil units. The revised budget column is presently blank and will remain blank until we get closer to the revised budget time in the spring. And then, uh, we typically would give you the first Friday enrollment. You'll note the date here, uh, is September seventeenth, so we went to the middle of the month. You may recall last year, uh, as we started September and even into October, uh, we had some data issues that were corrected by the middle of October time. And so, we're trying to minimize that by giving you the most up-to-date information we can. So, right now, you can see, uh, if you find the total elementary, last year we had five hundred and four children. Do you find that number? Uh, we were predicting seven, or excuse me, four hundred and seventy-nine. And as of the seventeenth, uh, it appears we have four hundred and seventy-seven children. That's in grades K through six. At the high school, uh, last year we had four hundred and thirty-seven. We were estimating four hundred and thirty-nine. Uh, we are presently reporting out four hundred and fifty-two. Uh, so that's an increase of thirteen over budget and fifteen over the prior year average. Uh, the district total, however, you can see we had nine forty-one. Last year we were anticipating nine hundred and eighteen, and we are right now at nine hundred and twenty-nine. The conversion to pupil units is at the bottom. And then at the far right, you'll see the average. So, the average this month is easy. It's simply the September numbers carried forward. That average number will start to change mathematically as we add additional months' worth of data to the report. New for this year is some information at the bottom relating to the early learning or preschool program. There are four opportunities afforded in that program. There's three-year-old AM or morning program, a three-year-old afternoon program, a four-year-old program that offers, uh, students in enrollment three days a week, and a four-year-old program that offers students in enrollment five days a week. And you can see the numbers there. There was no estimate, estimate. Uh, those numbers are not budgetarily, necessarily budgetarily driven by a state aid formula. Uh, the state aid for early child, or the funding for early childhood, uh, family ed comes as part of the levy and is based on an estimate and gets cleaned up each year as part of the levy process. So, we just wanted to provide that for you right now as information, uh, good information as you monitor those four-year-olds potentially becoming kindergarten children next year. Speaking of kindergarten children, if I could draw your attention back to the top row. Uh, we had sixty-two children in kindergarten last year in average daily membership. We were anticipating sixty as part of the budget, and we are presently at fifty-five, so running slightly below what we had anticipated in kindergarten. But you can see those lower numbers, fifty-five and fifty-six in kindergarten and first grade, probably indicative of a bit of a trend towards smaller class sizes into the future. I would entertain any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Tolleson?
I don't have any questions for you, um, Mr. Tolleson about it, but I just, to talk about enrollment, um, we have a lot going on with the referendum right now, but I think this should be something brought to either November, December, January work session, just talk about enrollment as a, as a whole. We've talked about it a couple different times about how do we boost enrollment and stuff, but there's no, been no actionable items. So, I think we need to, like I said, the referendum is first and foremost right now, but we need to, thinking about how do we get that enrollment? Because while I agree there are maybe less children, um, to our north, Crosslake is now expanding from five hundred to seven hundred students for their, um, K through six. So, I mean, they're seeing an influx. If I go on my Facebook, I see advertisements pushed out to me for Crosslake School. So, I mean, we need to be doing something to showcase our Crest, our Crest School. I think we've been doing better at the high school level, definitely with our Ranger Maid and, um, you know, home, um, fax now and stuff, but we need to also think about that too. So, just to put that down the road, so actionable items.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on. Eight is the consent calendar, eight point one to eight point three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to say it's very much appreciated, the donations again this month totaled almost sixteen thousand dollars, so. And CLEF was a big chunk of that along with the Booster Club, so. Those two are a substantial amount of that, so. So, thank you. That's all I got.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On nine personal consent items, nine point one to nine point eight, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number ten, action items, ten point one, approve the following policies. Second reading and adoption of revised policy five twenty-four, internet technology and cell phone acceptable use and safety policy. Second reading and adoption of revised policy six oh two, organization of school calendar and school day. Second reading and adoption of policy seven oh nine, student transportation safety policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? So, I just wanna say on policy five twenty-four, I know we've had a lot of, um, discussion about cell phone use. I wanna bring this back in the spring after our new principals have had a chance to kind of, um, look at how their buildings operate, what they feel is gonna be best for our students and kind of get the feedback from them. But I think it's important that we bring that back, um, this spring with recommendations and ideas and stuff from them. And maybe, um, we can have that part of our work session, because it is under policy, um, to have them come and chat with us about.
I would, I would definitely look at doing it earlier than later, because just with the end of the school year and then give enough time. So, let's, I mean, I, I spoke about this, that I am for a phone policy ban, um, that if that's something we wanna do, I think you need to give many opportunities for community listening sessions and just families to come out. So, I would not wanna do it like in May and then be like, okay, June and July when everyone's busy, so, um, just to put that to be early.
Put March still.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
Even if we could do a survey of some kind of community survey to get some parent feedback, that'd be potentially useful.
Well, the reason I want the principal input is because they're in the building working with it.
They're the ones enforcing it. I mean, we can sit here and set whatever policy we want, but unless we're in the building, that's not. that's not.
Right, right, and we, we don't see the learning aspect of it in person like they do with their teachers and stuff. So I think it's important that we let them kind of give us the feedback and understand what they're seeing and go from there, so.
So for clarification, I'd just like to ask, are we looking to adopt this policy tonight and then revisit again?
Correct.
Just put it out there that we will revisit again in March.
Yep, I brought it up, I left it up at the last meeting, just to, to give them the leeway to do that.
Yeah, 'cause there, I believe there were some changes, well, there was changes on that one, so I just wanna make sure that we get those approved and then we can revisit it.
Make a motion to approve.
Already did that already.
Sorry, already did it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.2, set adult lunch price at $5.05 and adult breakfast price at $3 for the 2025 to 26 school year. These rates will also apply to second student meals, updated from earlier action based on MDE's release of a new minimum rate for lunch for the 25, 26 year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.3, certify the 2025 payable, 2026 proposed levy at the maximum amount calculated by the Minnesota Department of Education. Do I have a motion?
So, I was gonna say it, we didn't ask for it. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.4, adopt resolution appointing election judges for the November 4th, 2025 school district special election. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.5, approve dissolution of extracurricular cooperative for dance team with Lake Region Christian School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the reason why we're doing this is because we no longer have any students from that school, so.
That is correct.
And it's been that way, I think, for?
A few years, it sounds like.
Two years minimum?
And the ADs from both schools did discuss that.
I was gonna say that, to clarify for the public, because we talked about it in our work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that.
It's not that we're not happy with it.
Correct, yep, it's just they didn't have any students. Their AD felt that it was okay. Our AD brought it to that attention, so, yep. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 10.6, approve overnight trip requests from National Honor Society slash Student Council for a leadership forum at Craigens Resort in Brainerd from November 2nd to November 3rd, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I would just reiterate that this is one of, being funded by one of the grant requests that was brought to CLEF, so a delight.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number 11, public comments. If there's anyone in the public that wants to come up and comment about anything at